The roll call.
James Meyer.
Aziz Asen.
And Norma Drummond. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We do, we have two absent members this evening. We do have an alternate member who is going to be joining us a little bit late this evening, so as soon as she gets here, we'll have her join us at the table here. But we do have a quorum, so we're all set. Our next meetings will be Tuesday, June 14th, and Tuesday, July 12th. It's kind of weird to be talking about July already, but, all right, we once had a minutes to approve from April 12th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes with, there were very, very few amendments to them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're good with that. All right, so just to make sure folks who are attending this evening understand how our meetings work, and by the way, I do acknowledge that we do have some students in the room, so in about an hour or so, we'll sign your certificates for you. First item on our agenda are, there are a couple decisions. These are appeals where the board has already reviewed the material, we've already held a public hearing, and, but we just needed some time to think about what to do about those, the items. So there are two decisions on. Then we have public hearings. These are where we ask for your comments and your input as neighbors. The board's already had a chance to do a quick review of those and just to make sure we understand them, but at this point, we're to, we're ready to hear from neighbors if you have any concerns about those. After that, we have just regular reviews, and those are generally items that we're seeing first, for the first time. Those are new applications that have come into us, so there are quite a few reviews on this evening. In terms of the agenda itself, we're, there is, we're not going to hear item number four, and we are not going to hear item number eight. Both of those applications have been withdrawn. In both cases, though, or no, in one case, we have to do a refund of funds. Both of them? Okay. On both cases, we have to do a refund, so when we get to them, we'll take care of those. All right, so moving forward on our agenda, so item number one is decision, appeal 3777, Pereira, George and Gina Pereira, 45 Tina Lane Hopel, are requesting a variance to allow the parking of a commercial vehicle, a tow truck, at their home pursuant to section 194-52 of the zoning ordinance.
This is, this is appeal number 3777. Applicants are Jorge and Gina Pereira, and they're requesting a variance to allow for parking of their commercial vehicle, tow truck, at their home pursuant to section 194-52 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Asen, whereas the applicant has applied for a variance to allow the parking of a commercial vehicle, tow truck, at their home, and whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on March 30th, 2016, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on April 12th, 2016, and whereas the zoning board of appeal finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant is a tow truck operator, and he must respond to scene promptly, and if the tow truck is kept at his alternate location in an industrial zone, he would not be able to meet that time constraint. Section 194-52 of the zoning ordinance states that the ZBA may permit a tow truck, lawn maintenance equipment, or other small commercial vehicle needed for employment by the resident property owner. Close quote. The variance requested is not substantial, as the applicant has agreed that all flashing lights and backup sounds will be turned off when the vehicle is in use in the applicant's neighborhood. Additionally, the applicant has restricted the request to the size of the vehicle currently in service, a 19,500 GVW-
Gross vehicle weight.
Gross vehicle weight, 21-foot flat, flatbed truck, a new version of this truck, same basic weight and length, will be permitted when this vehicle is no longer operational. The applicant will also keep this lot and office at the prop, the applicant will also keep his lot and office at this location it presently is. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the, on the physical or environmental conditions, as the applicant will turn his backup alarm and lights off when he is driving in the neighborhood, and there will not be any vehicles stored on the flatbed, on, or on the property. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the requests by the zoning, by, of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that motion carries and is all set. There's just the one typo in there. All right, so item number two is a decision for appeal 3778. Capelli, Alfred Capelli Jr., representing Mary and Mark De Riviere, is requesting a variance to build on an undersized lot, .73 acres, which was created prior to zoning, located at 8 Ninnam Avenue, Wapenters Falls pursuant to section 194-130 of the zoning ordinance.
Can we just, yeah, I'll read it, just, points, I thought it was point 73, unless finding, or was second, number five, it's not put in there, it just says XX, I wanted to write that first.
Oh, okay.
This is in reference to appeal number 3778 by Mary and Mark De Viver, variance to build an undersized lot, .73 acres, which was created prior to zone, located at 8 Ninnam Avenue, Wapenters Falls pursuant to section 194-130 of the zoning ordinance. Again, located at 8 Ninnam Avenue, Wapenters Falls, resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas the applicant has applied for a variance to build on an undersized lot, .73 acres, which was created prior to zoning, and whereas this action is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on March 30th, 2016, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on April 12th, 2016, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that section 194-130 is entitled, quote, "undersized lots", end quote. Section 194-130D provides as follows, "An undersized lot, which was lawfully created prior to the effective date of this chapter, whether or not held in single and separate ownership. Which lot adjoins another undersized lot upon which is located the residence of the owner may be considered by the board of appeals for the purpose of granting a variance in accordance with section 194-130B, provided said lot meets the bulk regulations of section 194-130A, paren three, and paren four." In this applicant's ZBA application, Mr. Capelli states as follows, "One, his reason for this appeal is to construct a new single-family dwelling on an undersized vacant parcel. Two, all the homes in the neighborhood are similar-sized lots. Three, this lot is pre-existing and non-conforming to today's zoning relative to minimum lot size. Four, all setbacks are being met, lot is just undersized. Five, new home will fit right in with the character of the neighborhood." This board also learned the following from the applicant, "One, the property owner has a person who wishes to buy the two lots, 8 Ninnam Avenue and 9 Ireland Avenue, and to construct two single-family homes, one on each lot. Both still need Board of Health approval after any needed variance is granted by the ZBA. The lots will be serviced by public water. Two, the problem is that the applicant's two lots are not in separate ownership under section 194-130. They are owned by the same person. Three, the applicant was pursuing his appeal number 3778 only as of the board's meeting and public hearing held on April 12th, 2016. Appeal 3779 was not heard on April 12th, 2016, and was being withdrawn by the applicant. At the outset of the public hearing on April 12th, 2016, the applicant underscored that Mr. Capelli represented the owners of the vacant lot at 8 Ninnam Avenue, where the lot was created over 30 years ago. Mr. Capelli stated that the house that could be built on this lot could fit within all the required setbacks. The lot is undersized, as most of the development is also undersized. It was not self-created. The applicant's clients owned the lot before zoning was adopted that created the lot in question. Mr. Capelli advised this board that the reason that the other application, appeal 3379, has been withdrawn is because the builder who was looking to buy both lots signed contracts with the owners for each lot. Mr. Capelli then said a neighbor came over to the property one day and stated he has a right of first refusal dated from 2012, and therefore questioned how the builder could be in contract for the vacant lot. This right of first refusal creates a number of issues. As a result, the applicant stated he would withdraw the other appeal, appeal number 3779, on the record. Also, the board requested a copy of the right of first refusal so there is a clear understanding that the lot in question is going to be combined with the lot, other lot. I think we need to add there that owned by the person with the right of first refusal.
With the person with the right of, right, okay.
Okay. Owned by the person.
Person, persons.
Yeah, but it asks, with the right of first refusal. The right of first refusal important for the board to consider with the instant appeal still before this board. The right of first refusal states that someone has a valid, enforceable interest in a lot in question, which prevents the two lots from being legally combined. The board advised the applicant that the right of first refusal may resolve whether or not the lots are considered as two separate lots. The board noted that the proposed houses fit within the required setbacks with no other variance required, and the lot was created before the enactment of zoning in the town of East Fishkill. The board took testimony from Anthony and Donna Bayan, 12 Ninnam Avenue. They described the character of the neighborhood and lots, and the history of the lots as they know, same. The board provided an aerial photo of the lots in the area and their bulk sizes, .67, .7, and .8 acres. The board also took testimony from Julio Vasquez, 10 Ninnam Avenue. He stated he preferred that no house be built on the property in question. This board hereby finds and mandates as follows, "One, the lot in question was made to be undersized and non-conforming by the town's adoption of one-acre zoning in the neighborhood. Two, the right of first refusal, if exercised, removes the opportunity of combining the two as-yet unbilled lots into a conforming single lot. Three, the lot is buildable without any variances. Four, the neighborhood has public water available, reducing the area needed to provide for the mandated separation between well and septic. Five, the variance request is not substantial, as the lot in question is .73 acres and representative of other lots within the neighborhood. Six, granting of the variance will not have an impact on the neighborhood, as the lot already exists, and many lots in the neighborhood are of similar size. Therefore, the board grants the variance requested. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by applicants of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the, excuse me, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner."
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the motion carries. All right, so item number three, we're, we're now on to public hearings. Item number three is appeal 3731. Kenna, Joseph Kenna, 538 Hosner Mountain Road, Stormville, is requesting a 30-foot rear-line variance for an existing garage with a landing and stairs, and 11-foot rear-line variance for an existing in-ground pool, a 13-foot rear-line variance for an existing pool patio, a 3-foot rear-line variance for existing pool equipment, a 19-foot rear-line variance for an existing swing set, a 7-foot rear-line variance for an existing 10-foot-by-10-foot frame deck, and a 45-foot rear-line variance for the proposed 34-foot-by-22-foot detached garage pursuant to sections 194-93, 194-95, and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, it's been a number of months since you've been before us, so you're going to need to update us and any neighbors who might be here related to your application as to what is going on, and-
Okay. I am Steve Miller, I'm with Batian Watson Surveying and Engineering, here with Mr. Kenna this evening. Mr. and Mrs. Kenna own a lot on Hosner Mountain Road, which also has access on Lee Town Road in the town of East Fishkill. It had been, become evident that a pool and deck and other secondary structures on Mr. Kenna's lot were in violation of the zoning setback, to the extent that even the pool deck was, was over onto the neighbor's property. This all came about when Mr. Kenna came before the board looking for a variance to construct a new garage on his property. In the interim, Mr. Kenna was able to consult with his neighbor, Mr. Danko, and they were, came to an agreement about swapping a portion of land between themselves such that the pool deck would be on Mr. Kenna's property, but which still would require variances for rear setback for the pool, for the pool deck, for a garage that was constructed sometime in the past, and, and a swing set plus some other minor improvements. At the same time, Mr. Kenna, in his effort to come before the board to, to have a variance granted for the proposed garage, went back to Mr. Danko with the idea that he could probably, that he might purchase Mr. Danko's lot, which may, might alleviate the need for the significant variance for the proposed garage, as well as the variances for the, the pool deck. Since the last time we were here, while Mr. Danko and Mr. Kenna have some sort of verbal agreement about the purchase of the lot, it all comes down to whether or not the lot is considered buildable by the health department. So there, unfortunately, the issue about whether Mr. Kenna will be purchasing Mr. Danko's lot is still up in the air. So we're back to the point where we're here before the board requesting the variances that were initially requested previously. It might happen sometime in the future that Mr. Danko and Mr. Kenna come to some agreement about the purchase of the lot, but at this, at this time, we have to deal with the variances as they were presented previously.
What's the size of the lot next door?
One acre.
Okay, so it's within the required zoning, it's not an undersized lot?
It's not an undersi, well, the current zoning is R3.
So it is an under, but it was created-
But it, it, in, at the time it was created, it met the current zoning at that time.
Okay, got it.
So the lot he's looking to purchase is one acre?
That's correct.
And the reason it is purchased is to avoid the variances, need for the variances, then you're going to be combining it anyways, aren't you?
Well, the, the situation is, the price that is being asked for the property calls for Board of Health approved property.
Oh, I see, so if it's not, then you're getting-
So that's kind of, you know, you know, so pertaining to that being updated, we got it, we have a deal.
Okay.
But, but, you know, at the, at the price that we're looking to get, that needs to be in play.
If I understand it correctly, if it's not Board of Health approved, you'll get it at a lesser price, because-
Or at the price agreed.
What's that?
Or at the price agreed?
Well, the lesser price than if it's Board of Health approved.
Of course, that's correct.
Okay.
Of course.
You're not looking to actually build on it, because then, I mean, once you combine them, they would be combined anyways. That's where I was getting confused.
But why would you bother with Board of Health approval if you're not going to build on the lot?
Because, because the-
Just to determine the price?
Yeah, the price, exactly.
Okay. So is your intention then to potentially combine the two lots?
My intention at this point is to go for the variances the way they sit now, and I can make that decision down the road pertaining to what I pay for the lot, because the lot at the price that they're looking for calls for it to be, you know, developed at some point.
Okay, I, I understand that.
So I can get a fuller number.
But understand that previously, the last time we had the public hearings, the Dankos did come to this board and did present some objections to the variances that are requested, so-
For the garage. For the garage.
For the garage, exactly. So we do need to be sensitive to the issues that they raised-
Understandable.
-related to your variances. Okay, so that's why it's relevant.
And we understand that they had concerns about it, but I, I would like to, to present to the board that, and unfortunately, I don't have a large copy, but if it's, or with the board, no, we have copies, look at that. The, the location-
Not with blue on them. This is colored.
Colored.
The location of the proposed garage, while it's, it's close to the property line, as you, you well know, Mr. Danko's concern was is that he was going to be able to see it from the proposed dwelling on his lot.
Right.
We note that it's approximately 140 feet between the proposed garage and the proposed house, and that there is some buffer trees and the like between there that would, would buffer the view if the house was constructed. And we also note that there is an existing house next door to the Danko lot that's only approximately 50, 60 feet from where this would be.
Okay.
So, so while we understand Mr. Danko's concern about its proximity to his house, I think it's, it's important to note that there's a, there's a house existing already that it's well closer than where the proposed garage would be.
Okay.
And in, in, in direct line of sight, whereas, as between the proposed house and the proposed garage, there's at least some sort of vegetative buffer.
What's the relative elevation between these two structures?
It's approximately the same elevation. Well, if anything's higher, the, the proposed house would be higher than this, than the proposed garage.
Yeah, because if this was a flat lot, you would be building the lot, the house in the middle and not way off to the side here. Although you could be just, you could be preserving the vegetation as well.
This is where it's proposed in, on the, on the original Board of Health approval from the subdivision.
Okay.
So just, just getting back, while we, while we respect Mr. Danko's concern about the proximity of the garage to the property line, we just offer that piece of information about where it would be in relationship to the house that's constructed.
Well, I guess our concern as a board is, again, prior, if you just heard the last appeal that we just made a decision on, one of the issues in the code is that if there are two undersized lots, they really, the, under common ownership, the code calls for them to be combined. So that's why we're asking if your intention is to combine them, because then it eliminates your need for variances.
Yeah, doesn't look like that's going to be the case at this point.
Okay, there was, if I'm, again, it's been several months since we saw this, so one of the neighbors, but I think it was the neighbor across the street, raised some issue, just to refresh the record here, about-
Coverage.
Well, not just coverage, but also about the, that there was a swell or some kind of, they were calling it some kind of drainage, drainage way between where the garage is and, onto the Danko's lot. So there was some kind of-
There is, there's a ditch or some sort of convey, you know, grass conveyance in through here.
Right. Okay.
Alongside the, alongside the garage.
Okay. So that does, still-
It's the back of the garage that would be, you know, the, the back of the garage would be facing that.
It's on Danko's lot.
That's on Danko's lot, yeah.
Okay, because there was some concern about being sensitive to any runoff from anything in the garage or anything like that, because it would be an area that carries water somewhere. Okay, so yes, there, there was an issue about coverage, you are-
Right, and we, we had sent a letter to the board, and-
Have Mike back to the microphone, sorry.
Sorry. We had sent a letter to the board indicating that the, not including the proposed garage, that the existing building coverage would be in excess of .8% of what's allowed in the zone, and that if the proposed garage is constructed, the proposed building coverage would be in excess of 1.6%. Now that's, that's in relationship to the R3 zone. But if we'll, I, I, I offer that the original lots were created in a one acre at a time when one acre was allowed, and that percentage requirement is 12%.
Is it possible to move the proposed garage more than five feet away from the neighbor's property? Because I see an asphalt drive up there, which to me means that there's a flat area, so it can be, the variance can be further reduced.
Can you move this this way?
Yeah, it's kind of tight from this point to this point if we look here, though. I mean-
Right now, it's five feet from the neighbor's property.
It may be possible to move it so that there's a 10-foot setback. Any more than that, it starts encroaching into the, into the, into the driving lane for the driveway.
Yeah, it's pretty tight as it is coming through when you see from the corner to the corner.
That's what I'm sort of looking at, you could even nose out along the property line, and whether that's five more feet or seven more feet, I can't tell by eyeball on it, but it seems like you could have a straight line go along it. Asphalt drive is not, I'm not seeing where that's really delineated, though. I mean, I see the words, but where's the outline of it?
This is the edge of the driveway.
It looks like it's going under the garage now.
Right.
Oh, this is the entrance, here?
No, you come off of Lee Town Road.
No, the entrance to the garage is.
No, there's two bays here.
So, so there's really no reason for this to be all paved, other than an extra parking.
What is this, this is also a proposed garage?
Well, this, this is the proposed garage.
Yeah. Can you drop this so we can see?
I'm sorry.
The shaded portion is the proposed garage. This is an existing garage.
Yeah, and the entrance is here.
That's correct.
What's the entrance for the new garage?
Here.
That's what I'm saying, could it be, could it be like that? I mean, I don't know where you're, is this the outside edge of the den?
That's correct. This is the outside. This, these two lines are the edges of the asphalt driveway.
Yeah, I wasn't picking up on that.
So the asphalt does go under the proposed garage.
Yeah. But I don't, that's, that still is, what, 35-foot wide for that section of the asphalt? I mean, this asphalt drive is from this corner to that corner, what is this?
From here, it's about 60, from here to here.
I'm not going by that.
Okay.
I was going by the garage.
Okay. So that's 48.
Yeah, so if you came up, you'd still have 40-foot wide garage there, if you came eight feet up. It's pretty like, that's a lot-
45-foot driveway.
That's a lot of asphalt driveway. I mean, from here to here, what is that, like 100 feet, 100-plus feet?
Plenty of room to turn around.
94.
94. Yeah, that's fine, that's, I'm just trying to find that, I couldn't see it on this.
He's talking about moving this, you know, another five or eight feet this way.
Yeah, you did, that was blacked out.
Makes the variance, minimizes the variance, and, you know, that still gives you-
I don't know what happened. Did Pam steal it from me?
Yeah, it's kind of, kind of maybe, no.
I don't know where it went. It's just not meant to be doing.
I presume it rolled off when I got up and, I think my chair or something.
Don't worry.
There it is, there we go.
It's going to be a long night, huh?
They're looking for you to do something less than five feet.
So you've got a lot of asphalt, so what we're asking is, can you move it in?
They want you to move this in, so that you're not five feet, so that you're 10 or 12 feet from the property line.
Could certainly take a look at that.
All right. I mean, how many bays, how many bays is your current garage?
Two.
And so this is another two, okay. And now, but, but there's something there now, right? There's a trailer or something in that location now that you're going to, your intention is to get rid of that?
I gave you some pictures of-
Right, that's, that's-
What's there now, it's kind of roll in, roll out.
As, as I said, it's been a couple months, so I'm remembering there was something there, that this is going to look a lot better.
It's going to take, take a look at what I'm going to replace, you know, I'm going to replace it with something that's obviously an upgrade.
So the disturbance is really already there.
Exactly.
It's not going to get any worse, where the, the back of that trailer is not, is that where the back of the garage is going to be?
Pretty much exactly where it is, yeah. If you look at, if you look at the actual drawing that we submitted, it shows it underneath the, actually, the garage, if you have that there.
And then, how tall is the, what's there now, though? And then, how tall is the, what's there now, though?
Uh, approximately like.
Eight, 10, eight feet.
14 feet, no, maybe a little.
How tall is the garage going to be?
How tall is the garage going to be?
It's going to be probably 10 feet and then like a pitched, so another six or eight.
Essentially the same of what's there now.
Like a little attic space, you know, like the rest of the house.
As we've said before, there's just a lot going on on this property, so, but let's clean it up, let's, let's get.
That's why we're here, right?
I hear you. All right, any comments or questions for board members?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, so you're going to look into it for the next hearing, or you're going to, because right now, this is an adjourned, adjourned public hearing, so are you, do you want to come back with the proposed, you know, to further reduce your variance request?
Or do you want to offer that you'll, instead of five, you'll go to 12?
Well, yeah, I mean, you want to make sure, I mean, to survey that, to see how far forward you can come forward and still have a functional turnaround and stuff?
We have to do 10, we can take a look at that, but.
The good news is, he's got his surveyor here.
Exactly.
We don't have to worry about a wrong survey in this one.
I'd really like to get things, I really want to close this out. You know, I've been here like, you know, a lot of times, as you guys.
Got to hear a lot of months.
You guys know, you know, and.
Look, can you sort of eyeball, I mean, can you come forward, well, you're asking five now.
What's a seven feet?
I think that I could at least come forward five feet, and maybe shrink the garage down and make it like a 10-foot.
All right, so he's suggesting that he could go to a 10-foot setback.
Reduce the setback needed.
Would it be along this corner, along this corner?
No, another five feet would be. It's another nine feet.
Ten feet, okay.
But I think he, I think he was anxious to go to a 10-foot setback, though, and possibly shrink the width of the garage.
Double.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that as how it lays to the other side of it and maybe do what I have to do there or keep it the same, but, I mean, as of right now, you're looking at, what is it, 22? I would at least take a couple of feet off of that.
Now, what's behind the five-foot section, what do you have up there right now?
Well, it's basically a drop-off, that's the low end of the property over there on his end, so I'm up and he's kind of down.
No, because I was thinking if you go 10, 12, 15 feet, you could put vegetation so that would prevent your neighbor from seeing the back of the garage by, you know.
Well, I mean, we could definitely plant something there.
Some evergreens or something?
That's what I was sort of thinking, too, if you can.
You know, there's trees and stuff like that there as it is, but we can, we can definitely put some kind of border if we need to.
Again, remember, your neighbor did raise the view of it as a specific objection, so.
I understand.
We need to be sensitive to that.
Absolutely.
All right, so, but you're proposing to shrink the 22 feet, that's the depth of the garage?
Well, I would want to take a look at it, but, but, but I mean.
You can't shrink a whole lot and still fit a car in there, so.
Well, I think he was, correct me if I'm wrong, he was willing to go to a 10-foot setback, which would give him a five, and then shrink the width of the garage by two feet.
But that's.
The width, 34-foot side or the 22?
No, I'm sorry, the depth.
The depth, okay.
The depth, exactly.
But, but my impression of why you're saying that is to try to keep the front of the garage as close as possible to where it is now. And when you say you're going to redo.
Well, I mean, if you're going to pull it out another five feet, that's obviously going to bring it in five feet, which.
Correct.
I've kind of looked at it already, where it lays out to be, so it's kind of, you know, on that borderline of being able to swing a car in and be comfortable, so I may, I may look to say, you know what, I'll shave a couple of feet off of this thing to.
Again, so you're not saying you're going to shave off a couple of feet so you can come even further from the property line and be 12 feet away?
No, he's doing that to get to the 10 feet.
That's what I'm saying, correct, so.
Right.
Whether you shave it or not is not a consideration for me.
Well, if you add five and you had five, so that's the 10, right, behind, and then what I'm saying is that now that, that 22 coming out is another five feet out, so that's kind of where I have to take a look and see, you know, but I'm thinking if I shave a couple of feet off of that and make it 20.
But that's my point, whether you shave a couple of feet off of it is not important consideration for us.
Not affecting the setback.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to make clear for the record. Okay, so, if we're making the variance less, we don't have to be careful with you. We don't have to advertise or anything. Okay, so what else do we have to look at this?
Pretty much it looked at everything else, and.
That has been swapped already.
The only thing that really raised any objection, aside from the neighbor across the street being concerned about coverage, was the Dankos' concern about looking at the garage.
Yeah, because I, I don't know if I missed the one, we went through this in detail or not, I missed a couple. The garage, the setback for the pool, the 11-foot setback, is that's in consideration of the fact that there's going to be a lot line realignment?
The lot line realignment was completed already.
Okay, so that's done, so that doesn't change.
Yeah, so this is an applicant that's already pursued a lot line realignment at this board's request the first time he was in, working with his neighbor, he got that lot line realignment, which reduces the variance needed for the pool that was previously installed.
And all the rabbit hatches and chicken coops, are they still there or are they gone?
They're all gone. Oh, the coop is still there, but the chickens are all gone. My wife misses them, though, I gotta express that. There was definitely a slight tear in the eye there.
All right, can I get comments from neighbors? Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Joseph Kenna, 538 Hosner Mountain Road, Stormville, requesting a 30-foot rear line variance for an existing garage with landing and stairs, an 11-foot rear line variance for an existing in-ground pool, a 13-foot rear line variance for an existing pool patio, a three-foot rear line variance for an existing pool equipment, a 19-foot rear line variance for an existing swing set? Did we move the swing, no, the swing set's part of the, okay, that couldn't be moved, right, okay. A seven-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot framed deck, and a 45-foot rear line variance that we're now making a 40-foot, okay? 40-foot rear line variance for a proposed 34-foot by 22-foot, no larger than a 30-foot four-foot by 22-foot detached garage. Is there anyone who wishes to offer any comments? All right.
I'll close in a minute, I think.
Yeah, we're not likely to get any more information, so.
No, that's what I was just going to say, I can make a motion to close the public hearing and reserve decision.
Okay. All right, so what that means is, we're not prepared with a resolution tonight, we do have to, because we didn't know what you were going to present to us since it's been several months, okay? So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so.
That'll be available at the next, for the next meeting?
Hopefully, hopefully, but we'll do our best.
Very good.
And again, if you're going to be putting something in reference to vegetation along the back of.
You could definitely put that in there, we can, we can plant something if needed there. Maybe some Maifah bushes or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number four is a public hearing for Appeal 3779 Capelli, no, sorry, yes, that is. This is the one for the other lot, but the applicant's withdrawn their repeal, so actually I need a motion to refund $70 of the $75 fee paid.
No, but didn't we, is it?
This is the other one that he withdrew, so we have to refund a portion of his fee.
So moved.
I understand, yeah.
So moved, second by Aziz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so 0-foot pay for refund. Okay, moving right along, item number five is Appeal 3781 Guardioso, Gary and Marie Guardioso, 56 McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, a 19-foot sideline variance for a proposed hot tub, and a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence, which would be installed on the property line, a three-foot sideline variance for the existing house, and a nine-foot sideline variance for the existing 12-foot by 16-foot deck pursuant to sections 194-95, sorry, 93, 194-95, 194-98, and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so last month, we had an opportunity to review your request, and this was one of those dilemmas presented by a survey that was not where you expected your survey line to be, because of the tree line that you have, or what you thought was on your property, but now you have discovered is on your neighbor's property. You believed that when you looked to put in your patio and the hot tub, as you told us last month, you thought you were putting it further into your, or further away from your property line than it ended up being, that you ended, you got the survey done, your line was not where you had expected it was going to be, but that because you do have some trees there that your neighbor has, I hope, promised to not take down for you, that it is still offers some privacy and this continues to be the best place. Now, you also told us that you hired a contractor who began the construction and put the patio in. The hot tub is not there yet?
Actually, it was delivered.
Oh, it's now, you're taking delivery?
Because we had already purchased it, so we had to take delivery.
Okay.
It's just right now a very expensive planter.
Okay.
You didn't put plants in it.
No, not even water, nothing, it's just sitting there. Just sitting there begging.
All right, again, but, but which is.
Wanting you.
I can't stress enough the importance of having a good survey and making sure you know where your property lines are, because we've just heard so many issues.
We still really don't know, like I said, there have been four surveys and that line moves with each one.
Correct, and so we recognized last month that this was not of your own doing, that you really did expect the property line based on surveys that you had when you bought the house, et cetera, was that you, that you really did think your property line was somewhere else. And so the six-foot fence that you're asking is really to be able to.
Just a privacy fence.
Privacy fence, to be able to put it right on the edge of the patio, is what we talked about, just to be able to give you some privacy for you to enjoy your hot tub, so, anything else you'd like to add? No? Comments or questions from board members?
I'm okay.
All right, is there anyone here who wishes, oh, wait a second, we do actually have a letter from one of your neighbors. So we have a letter received Mar, I'm sorry, May 9th, from Dan Capiello, 52 McEwen Terrace. Dear Ms. Drummond and board members, my neighbors Gary and Marie Guardioso, who reside at 56 McEwen Terrace directly next door to me, have requested a variance for the installation of a patio, hot tub, and six-foot privacy fence. Even though the patio fence and tub would come very close to the shared property line, it is not close enough to any homes on either side that would cause a noise or visual annoyance or disturbance. This addition to their property would not detract in any way from the general nature of our neighborhood and would be barely visible to any but the Guardiosos. I believe it would be a nice enhancement. I would hope you would consider, all consider granting their request, thank you. All right, so this is one request, one letter from a neighbor, and you actually offered us letters last time, so I'm just going to read those into the record as well. So we have one dated March 14th, our neighbor, to whom it may concern, our neighbors Gary and Marie Guardioso have brought to our attention a concern regarding the property line between our properties and their intended installation of a patio, hot tub, and six-foot privacy fence. They have requested a variance be issued to complete the project. The side of their yard, which is where they intend to place the patio, hot tub, and fence, is shared with our backyards, although the project will sit extremely close to the actual line, it will come within inches at one point. Our homes are situated far enough apart that the line, from that line, that it won't be an encumbrance to the use of our yards or enjoyment of our properties. It will not change the functional use of our properties. No variance of current property lines for the purpose of complying with existing setback requirements would be proposed by any of the involved parties complying. We have no objections to the issue of a variance by the town to allow this project to be completed. Sincerely, Patricia and Peter Boyle. And it looks like Douglas and Julia Peterkin, but they didn't sign it.
They wrote their own letter.
Thank you. So another letter dated March 22nd, to whom it may concern, our neighbors Gary and Marie Guardioso, residing at 56 McEwen Terrace, have brought to our attention their desire to have a patio, hot tub, and privacy fence, which would fall within the setback requirements. No, which would not fall, but, okay. They have requested a variance to be issued, which we have no objection to this, and it would not interfere with the property line. And this is from Douglas and Julie Peterkin. Okay, so, so we have neighbors from three of your neighbors, or letters from three of your neighbors not objecting to this. So with that in mind, is there any else, anyone else who wishes to speak for or against the request from Gary and Marie Guardioso, 56 McEwen Terrace, requesting a number of variances related to a patio, hot tub, and six-foot privacy fence? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And?
Mary?
This is Appeal number 3781 for Gary and Marie Guardioso. It's for a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, a 19-foot sideline variance for a proposed hot tub, a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence, which would be installed on the property line, and a three-foot sideline variance for the existing house, and a nine-foot sideline variance for the existing 12-by-16-foot deck pursuant to sections 194-93, 194-94, 94-90, I guess that's 194-98, and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance located at 56 McEwen Terrace and Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Seminera. Whereas the applicant has applied for a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing patio, a 19-foot sideline variance for a proposed hot tub, a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence, which would be installed on the property line, a three-foot sideline variance for the existing house, and a nine-foot sideline variance for the existing 12-by-16-foot deck pursuant to sections 194-93, 194-94, 194-98, and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under seeker and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on April 27, 2016, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on May 10, 2016, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant's septic tank and fields are also located in the rear of the property. The applicant's original survey was incorrect, which necessitated the need for the variances for the existing house and deck. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by, by the applicant of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Before we add a second, can we just, Pam, ask you to clarify, the initial notice and the agenda notice says the second code is 194-95, but the resolution is saying 194-94. So, so I just want to make sure the resolution is correct.
It's on the agenda. The agenda's right, so it's 95.
Okay, so before we get a second, Mary, you're going to.
What are we changing in our mind?
In the heading, it's 194-93, 194-95.
95.
Okay, and then in the first whereas.
Right.
Okay, so with that, is there a second?
Second, as amended.
Okay. So votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set. Enjoy. All right. All right. Item number six, appeal 3783, Feely, Edward Feely, 34 Frost Road, Wapengers Falls, is requesting a variance to allow a proposed 22-foot by 24-foot carport in front of his existing house pursuant to section 194-07B of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we had a chance to look at, to review your application last month. We had seen this before, but then you did withdraw your application, 'cause just other things going on. And so, this time around, you've proposed moving the carport a little bit further to the left, so that it's gonna be less, as you're driving in from the cul-de-sac, it's gonna be less right there in front of your house, even though that's not the front of your house.
Correct.
It's gonna be less visible, because you have a lot of vegetation. The way your driveway goes in, it kind of veers to the right, and so, if you tuck it more into the left, there's a lot of vegetation on the left that will make it so much less visible from the front. Plus, we talked about last month about you actually turning the direction of it potentially.
That is, that is correct.
So, you would actually follow your driveway in and then turn left to be able to go into it, so you actually see the side of it, as opposed to seeing two open bays of a carport.
Yes, correct.
All right, and I think the board was appreciative of those couple changes. I am just concerned about knowing that the way your property is, and that you've excavated quite a bit of it out, where the shed is, are you gonna have to take, remove more?
I'm gonna remove the shed.
You're gonna remove the shed, but then are you, but the way you're shifting it, are you gonna have to take out more of that soil that's there?
The shell, yeah, a little bit.
Okay, and so, are you gonna stabilize that in any way?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Just planting, planting grass seed, what's your intention of how you're gonna stabilize that little bit of a hillside there?
Oh, plants, grass, plants and all that.
So, vegetation, something so that...
Yes, so, so it's not gonna be eroding or anything like that.
Right.
That's correct. And also, more vegetation on the side of, between the proposed carport and the cul-de-sac. Vegetation, just to kind of act as a screen?
Yes, okay. All right, so a little bit more screening, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any comments or questions from board members? Again, the issue, just to get it on the record, the issue we did look at, to the right of your house, really, I guess, the rear of your house, that's where your septic fields are, so you, you don't have the ability, plus, there's an elevation difference there, so you don't have the ability...
That is correct.
...to put the garage or carport on that side of your property. It would've been, we, we really were concerned a year ago about having it right smack in the front of, as you're driving in, it would've been much more visible from the cul-de-sac area. You are at the end of a cul-de-sac, so really, very few people are gonna be coming in to the hillside lake area that far to be able to see it. All right, so any comments or questions from board members?
So, basically, the shed is being removed, you're putting some kind of vegetation where the shed is, and then the carport is going to be basically substantially around the parking area.
That is correct, yes.
I'm, I'm good.
No, I would just comment, I appreciate the efforts that he made. We had some concerns in his work, and I appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so would anyone like to comment for or against the request from Edward Feely, 34 Frost Road, Wapengers Falls, requesting a variance to allow a proposed 22-foot by 24-foot carport in front of his existing house? Seeing none, I mean...
Motion to close?
And reserve.
Reserve.
Okay, just 'cause we've gotta write this one up a little carefully.
Okay.
So, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, hopefully, next month, we'll have your decision for you.
Okay, so come back next month.
You don't have to, you'll get it a couple days afterwards, but you're welcome to.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Watch it on television.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Item number seven, appeal 3784, Lori Amr- I don't wanna say this...Amarati, thank you, sorry, I don't like saying names wrong. Robert DeLuca of Advanced Construction, representing Daniel Laurie and Lisa Amarati of 35 Gary Williams Road, is requesting a variance to build a new house on a lot on a non-town road, Gary Williams Road, pursuant to section 194-13 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So, last month, we had an opportunity to review this, your request. This is a lot that has two houses on it.
Correct.
Two...I'm gonna say houses.
Old, beat-up houses.
Old houses, yes, exactly.
Taken down.
Your intention is actually to take down both houses, but what you've requested is to be able to let the family live in one of the homes while you, the one is demolished. You already had the demolition permit for one, so you'll tear down the one, replace the existing, that house, with a new house, new construction.
Right.
New house. And then, at the time that that house is completed, you'll request a demolition permit and be able to tear down the other house. So, at the end of the day, we've got one lot with one house.
Correct.
Okay.
They want it to the CO until we have both houses down.
Yes, and so, the, in speaking with the town engineer, there's gonna be a, a request for a bond, I believe it is, until such time to make sure that that second house...
Correct.
All right, does come down. The issue that you're, why you're here before us is because this is a non-town road, you do need permission to be able to build a house on that road.
Yeah.
So, that is one of the issues. Now, we did have an issue last time around that because this property, part of the property is in Kent, also Putnam County, that we did have to give notice, do a referral to both the town of Kent and the Putnam County. Did we hear from...we didn't hear from either?
No. Yes.
I thought, I think we heard from Putnam County.
We heard from Putnam County, but not the town.
On the record, Putnam County said, no objection, or...
You're right.
What?
You're right.
Okay, so, so Putnam County had no objection, but the town of Kent has not responded, and by law, they have 30 days. So, we'll take comment this evening, but we are not gonna be able to close the public hearing and give you a decision this evening, okay? Just, just so you're aware of that ahead of time. So, are there any comments or questions from board members?
Okay.
I think the one thing I need to ask is, do you have board of health approval for...
Yes, ma'am.
You do, okay. And so, this, you're gonna use...
We have everything we'll say, except for, you know, we went and did everything we had to do, and...
Okay.
They didn't tell us we needed the variance till we almost got the permit, so...
Okay.
I was just curious, what size houses are on the property now?
There, one is about 600 square feet, and the other one's about 1,600 square feet.
What size house are you proposing to put up?
About 2,800 square feet.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I think, is it, just curiosity, this is in Duchess County, part of it is in Putnam County, so do you need...
I thought everything was in Duchess County, I didn't realize that any part of it was in Putnam.
Okay, so do you need board of health approvals from both counties, or just one...
The house itself is in Duchess County.
The house itself, I think just the back property line borders the town of Kent.
Which still, which still obligates us to do a referral, anything within 500 feet.
None of the property is actually in Kent, it just borders that.
That's within the border line.
I think it is, just so you know, it is, part of it is in Kent.
Oh, is it?
We did check it out, yeah. So, all right, so it's...
I don't think the homeowner knows that either, so...
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Robert DeLuca of Advanced Construction, representing Daniel Laurie and Lisa Amer- Ameriti, sorry?
Hi, my name is Dorian Clement, and my husband Joe Clement and William Clement own the road.
Okay.
So, we just wanted to...
Can we ask you to go to the microphone, please?
Yes. We just wanted to find out what type of equipment's gonna come in and out, how they're gonna maintain the road and such.
No, we're gonna be very, you know, we're gonna work with you guys and make sure everything is, you know, taken care of, you know, there's gonna be trucks, obviously, but women or excavators, we gotta bring in some filler or something to level out the road, I mean, it's a dirt road, we'll take care of it.
Can we put a proposal, can I request them to put a proposal together? Because it's a one, it's one-way, and so, for me, with the family, I need to find out when they're doing it during the, you know, is it during the daytime?
Yeah.
Can we get in and out? And the second thing is...
No, we won't block the road.
Is it gonna, you know, is your equipment too wide for the road?
Are you doing stick-built, or are you doing modular construction? You're stick-building, so, so you're not gonna have cranes coming in then, but you'll still have excavation equipment?
Yeah, we'll put something in there that, you know, will maintain the road. Not maintain, but...
You're gonna put something in where? Because this is not a town issue, this is a private road issue.
So, we just need to make an agreement.
Between us and...
Right.
And the Lories and...
Do you know how to contact each other?
No.
Well, I mean, not that...
Okay.
Have we addressed your issues?
So, my question would be, is because we're the owners of it, you're not required to have him do a write-up, like, we have to do that on our own?
That's, John, that's a private arrangement, right?
Okay.
All right, so that's beyond the scope of what we're here for.
Okay.
Great. But you're welcome, make sure you have each other's information, and you're welcome to work out whatever you need to do. Are there any, do you have objections with tearing down the existing two houses and replacing them?
No.
That's, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me?
We need, yeah, can we ask you to sign in, please?
A clipboard on the side.
Just so that we have a record of further minutes. Yes, come?
And there's, some people were signing in ahead of time, so we might wanna look at that to make sure...
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you something, I'm not against the building the house.
Okay.
Because I saw the houses, and they are in need repairing.
Yes.
But that's not my concern.
Okay.
The very last house on the road...
Okay.
...was put in several years ago. Now...
Is it on this lot?
Not on this lot, but next to that lot.
Okay.
Okay. It was a different excavator that was taking the initiative to get this house down there, and that's what I was concerned, if he was going to be having a modular home, or whether it was just gonna be...
Stick-builts.
One, I didn't know what it was called, but I knew what it meant. That first house that went down into that road moved our property line back. It was taken back by the excavator. Now, they said they had gotten permission from us. No one ever came to get permission.
Okay.
They had said that they would come and rebuild our wall. That was also on that, our property, but we have never seen that done yet.
Okay.
And this was many years ago now.
Unfortunately, that's not related to this application?
I realize that.
So...
But that was my concern, why I wanted to be here. I thought if he was getting a modular home, it might mean our property line would be moved again. And that should not be.
I, I agree with you. Unfortunately, that contractors, the other contractors long gone to be able to...
I, I couldn't, I could not tell you where they were from, and I can't be sure of the name, but it was something like Turvy or Turkey or something like that.
Okay.
Not, nothing I ever heard of before.
Okay. All right, so do you have any objection to their tearing down the two existing homes and building a new one?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And I do know the property, but because my grandfather had it.
Okay, good.
And, true, part of the property is in Putnam, and part is in Duchess, and I used to live in one of those houses, rented it.
Wow.
And when Mr. Heliger had it, of course, that's a few years ago, too. And my dad always kinda kidded with me, he said, "Well, you live in Duchess, but you sleep in Putnam." But it really wasn't that way at all. It was just on the border, the property was.
Thank you.
Can you wanna sign your name in on the...
Have you signed in already?
No, I probably didn't have to.
Somebody noted that somebody signed in already.
Yeah, there's, there's three or four names on it.
Thank you very much.
They thought they were signing in for the meeting, I think.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer comment? All right, we cannot close this evening's public hearing again because of the Kent issues, so...
All right, so... Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that, you know, you, you have the neighbors right here, just exchange the phone numbers, contact.
Yeah, I'm gonna exchange the numbers with them right now.
Make sure that you, you know, we don't have those issues that they've had in the past.
Not a problem.
All right, so do I...
Okay, so, motion adjourned.
Thank you.
So, do I have to come back to the next?
Yes, please. Yeah, we wanna hear what Kent, the town of Kent has to say, if anything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
So, motion to adjourn, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll, we will continue this one and hopefully finish it up next month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's it for our public hearings this evening, so the rest of our reviews are just gonna be the, generally, initially, the first time we see it. Students in the audience at this point, if your form is filled in with the right meeting, especially since you had notice ahead of time, we will sign it for you.
Pressure's on.
Anybody up here can sign it.
Okay, gonna do it.
Oh, wow. All right, item number eight, appeal 3770, Chico and Stacosa, this application's been withdrawn, I need a motion to refund, the full refund in this case, the $75.
So moved.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so item number nine, appeal 3782, Beckhold, Tiffany Beckhold, 150 Woodcrest Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 19-foot sideline variance for a proposed 20-foot by 50-foot attached garage, a 5-foot front lawn variance for an existing front porch, and a 1-foot sideline variance for an existing pool deck pursuant to sections 194-107, 194-94, and 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. All right, so we had a chance to see this last time, we were not overly excited with your survey, I guess it was, and so, we, one way is, we were looking at it, we were just trying to make sure that we're, we, we taking care of everything, and so, by getting the new survey that you got since our meeting, we did, we now added the other thing, the other variances that you need, obviously, we're not gonna make you move your existing house, so we're gonna make sure that everything else is in compliance, so that's, that's not an issue. What you talked about was having, which we originally thought a 50-foot long garage was a little strange, but then you explained to us that it's for an RV, so, obviously, that, that makes a lot of sense, and, you know, people don't necessarily like to see those out in the, in the driveway, so, but by adding it on to the side of your house, it will be attached to your house, not detached. It puts you a little closer to the sideline than you should normally be, so, so we did, like I said, have an opportunity to review it. We didn't necessarily talk about, like, screening or anything, are you gonna, what's, you didn't really know what it was gonna look like, 'cause you said you wanted to be sure you were gonna get a variance before you got too far, so...
It's gonna, it's gonna be same as the house now.
So, the materials will match the house?
Yeah, exactly the same.
Okay, but are you gonna put up any screening at all? I don't remember, was there screening along that property line with your neighbor?
There is, I actually took pictures of it.
Okay.
And I didn't get to print it out, it's on my iPad, if you want to take a look at it.
Okay, and this is, actually, I should say that this is a corner lot where you're at Carpenter Road and Woodcrest.
Woodcrest, yeah.
And we were having a, you know, we did actually talk about, could we put it on the other side, but then technically, it's in your front yard, because it's a front, because it's, you know, along a street, it just didn't make sense. Was there a playset or something, or something that was gonna get moved?
Yeah, the swing set was gonna be removed.
Okay, that you're gonna...
And then, you had the shed, he put down, the frame shed would be removed on the survey, too.
Right, okay, that's right.
The little one, yeah.
When the survey came in, you had told them to put that down, so, so you really did clear up all of the issues that we had identified for you as, as being potentially When the survey came in, you had told them to put that down, so, so you really did clear up all of the issues that we had identified for you as, as being potentially issues, so...
Talked to the neighbor too, like you asked him.
Oh, you did, good.
Yeah, he was fine with it.
Okay. Um, because yours, like I said, the way your lot was and...
I only have one neighbor, basically, it's kind of...
Who's in essence your backyard, but it's not really, it's...
Yeah, it's...
Okay, so any comments or questions from board members? Otherwise, are we okay to set this up for public hearing?
Um, there's a couple of framed sheds, they both are going to be removed or just one of them?
No, the one on the side.
Okay, the one that's closest to the neighbor's property will be removed?
Yes, it's, it's a small shed, I think it was an eight by 10 or something.
Pam, I don't think we got the new survey in our packets. Just not for, for the next meeting, for the public hearing, okay?
Okay.
But it, it did, the new survey did say to be removed, definitely.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Motion to advertise for our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we'll, Pam will give you the instructions for your sign. And you're going to need two signs, because you do have two streets, okay, so, um, and...
I do have a question. When would be the next time we would, uh...
June, so the meeting is June 14th, Tuesday, June 14th.
Do I have to be here?
Somebody should be here. What, you want to do July?
You're on 14th? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we won't pick on you.
No, we're just coming back from our honeymoon, so it's...
Oh.
I don't want to ruin that.
No, you better not.
No, better not, not that early in the marriage, okay. Somebody...
So it'll be fine, no, it'll be fine.
You just want, if anybody does say something, you just want to be able to either respond to us with any concerns somebody might raise, or, or make some suggestions on how we might be able to mitigate it, that's all, so...
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll be here.
Again, you don't have many neighbors on this one, so...
As long as you have a representative to be here, and if you can get letters from your neighbors, so then the issue of neighbors' concerns might already be addressed, so you, you have certain options.
Okay, now, the neighbors in, because I only got...
Within 500 feet of your property.
Okay.
At least I...
So then across the street?
Yeah, next and across, yeah, and, or anybody else, and...
Okay, but so you can go and see Pam.
Yeah, Pam will give you your instructions, and we'll see you next month, and good luck. Congratulations. All right, item number 10, Appeal 3785, Susco. Stephanie Susco, 29 Brigham Lane. Hopewell Junction is requesting a five-foot sideline variance for an existing in-ground pool, a six-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment, and an 11-foot sideline variance for an existing pool patio pursuant to sections 194-93 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hello.
All right, you have to explain to us what happened, and why do you have a pool that is not in compliance?
Well, I really don't know what happened. Um, we put the pool in, I thought it was...
When?
Last June.
Okay.
Last around, yeah, last May, last June. I thought everything was good.
If you could pull the microphone down a little closer to you.
Sure. And then, whoa, and then they came to do the...
Microphones work.
Yeah. I speak loud anyway. They came to, um, sign off on the pool.
Fused out the permit?
Yep, and they said we needed an as-built survey, and then everything from there went downhill.
Okay, so when you applied, did the pool get put in where the application said it was going to be, or did the pool get moved?
No, it didn't get moved, but it wasn't in the right spot.
Well, that's a good question. The setback is what, well, 25 feet?
25 feet, right.
Looking at this, I was ready to give him 20 feet, 25. And somehow your patio's on a neighbor's property.
Yeah, your patio is on your neighbor's property, according to the survey.
Is it, or is that just a fence?
No, I thought it was just the fence that's three feet of the fence.
I think it's the fence, the patio look like, it looks like it ends shy of the fence, yeah.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I misread that.
I mean, you're not close to 25 feet from, you know, from being, well, I guess you're...
They got to 22.
You are closer than, okay, it's your patio that's awfully close, because your patio only has to be 10 feet away, but it...
Yes.
Patio has to be 15.
Sorry, the patio has to be 15, sorry.
It's probably, what, four feet away in the back, maybe? Five feet?
And so of the 15, you need an 11-foot variance, so your patio is four feet from your property line. That's awfully close. I mean, so when you applied, you put the pool in this location on the building permit?
And how did you certify that it was 25 feet away?
Yeah, we had like 25 feet, what we thought was 25 feet to the left of us and like 70 feet to the right of us.
You, this is the same old story, that the house, the side of the house is not parallel to the property line. It's built parallel to the house, not the property line. Because probably from the corner of the house, you have 25 feet.
So the, um, let's address the chain link fence, what are you going to do about the chain link fence?
There isn't, I don't understand why that's even on the survey, there is no chain link fence.
Well, you have to have some fence around the pool, right?
We'll be able to find a fence.
There's a fence around the pool, but it's not a chain link fence.
Or whatever.
It doesn't, it doesn't identify it as chain, oh, it does, it does say on one side, it says chain link fence.
Yeah, it does.
But, so, there is a fence?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a chain link fence?
No.
Okay, but it is a fence.
Is it an iron fence, what is?
Yes, it's an iron fence.
Maybe that's the closest, but anyway, that fence is on your neighbor's property, so how are you addressing that issue?
Well, they said if I did the variance...
That doesn't address you putting your, something for you on somebody else's property.
We can't give you permission to do that.
Yeah.
But we have permission from the neighbor.
How do you have permission from the neighbor?
Well, it should be on file that, well, I, I thought that would be good, that's why when I came here to get the, um...
What would be good?
I got a consent form from an attorney, and me and my neighbor signed it and had it notarized.
A license?
And we drew up an easement.
An easement.
That's part of the building department's...
Oh, it's down in the building department?
Yeah.
So you got that in response to the survey?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because when they came to do the survey, they said that only three feet of my fence is on the person's, is on my neighbor's property.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little area, mm-hmm.
But if we moved the fence, would that be good enough?
No, that's just one issue.
I guess the question comes with...
And you got much bigger issues than three feet of fence, okay?
Well, I really can't see what it, is it really an easement, or they give you a license to use it for a while, do you know?
They, I had a whole easement drawn up from an attorney, yeah, it's like 15 pages long.
Wonder if they would do a...
A lot line realignment?
Lot line realignment and take care of the problem.
Did you talk to your neighbor at all about swapping some of your property, live, giving...
He said he doesn't care, what, it doesn't matter, he doesn't care.
You can do a lot line realignment, that will take care of the problem. In other words, where your pool is, you, if you're looking at your house, you're going to go to the left a little bit, and then maybe once you get past the pool, you can give him the back corner, so you both end up with the same amount of property. That's the best way to take care of this, but we're not...
That would be a permanent solution.
We're not happy giving variances for pools.
We generally don't.
Yeah. So, when you tell me he's wanting to give you an easement, maybe you could do a lot line realignment, you know, spending more money for an attorney, but as a guarantee. We have, as a matter, again, we don't have a matter of policy, we have said people have to figure out what they're going to do and not grant them a variance for a pool. So if they can't do something such as a lot line realignment, they're going to have to tear the pool out. So, that may be something you want to check into with your neighbor, since he's being so accommodating.
Okay, so the variant, I would have to do the lot line, what is it?
A lot line realignment.
Can you just come up for a second?
And forget about the variance? Is that how that works? Well, it, by doing a lot line re, of realignment, you might be able to minimize the amount of variance that you need.
See, my impression, and I, and I might be wrong, is, is that somebody told you you had 25 feet or more from your house to the, to the property. Problem is that they're at these angles, so, but if you, neighbor was nice enough to give you a lot line realignment that went back like this, so that you stayed 25 feet away, and then here you might do something like that, and you both end up with the same amount of property. Understand what I'm saying?
25 feet away is the pool, or...
Pool's got to be 25 feet away from your property line.
Neighbor's property line.
Well, your joint, yeah, property line, between you and your neighbor.
So if you can get five feet back, then you eliminate the variance for the pool.
See, let's say...
It's on a triangle, is where the property line ends in the back.
So let's, your, your, your line, your property line's going in, and your house, your, or pool's coming out, whatever way you want to do it, so let's, for...
What we need is the difference right at the...
Right here, see, this is 22, so there you need three feet.
And then the fence would come on your property.
So you, if you had your property go like that...
And then just give them back over there.
Yeah.
Right, give them some of that to back.
You end up with the same amount of property.
You take a sliver here, and they take a sliver there.
And you have a permanent solution.
Because I think that's what he did, because...
Yeah.
That's probably what you did for the easement, essentially he's...
That's what, you're right, that's what one of the other applicants did before, for his pool. He did a lot line realignment with his neighbor, so that his pool was less, well, his patio was actually on his neighbor's property, but he did it, so his pool needed less of a variance.
It's a, it's a, um, appeal number three that we just handled today.
But you might be able to eliminate the variance for the pool, and maybe we reduce the variance for the patio.
Yeah, the patio is we aren't as concerned about, but the pool's, it's a recent amendment to the statute, we try to keep the, the setback, because they recognize, the town board recognized as a legislative body that it was important for the neighbors that they have... So if you see one in your neighborhood, it may have been built more than, you know, 20 years ago, whatever, and they're just maintaining it. This takes care of your problem.
Yeah.
And by giving you an easement, he's already ceded use of the land to you, so this, you know, shouldn't bother him. I would guess, it wouldn't bother him, it's just a matter of having the surveyor come out and being able to do a description of that, so they can do exactly what you're getting and what you're giving up.
But it does require approval by the, by the planning board.
Any word, lot line?
Okay, so you would have to do a subdivision approval, or, you know, by the planning board, so you would have to make an application to the planning board. So we would hold this application until you finish with them.
While you're taking care of that, while this is on hold, you're not going to be worried about the town coming after you, as long as you're using due diligence to address the problem, okay?
So you know exactly?
Did you follow that?
I just go to the...
Basically, what you want to do is turn your easement into probably a lot line realignment.
Yeah, just ask the attorney who did it.
Okay, so I do the lot line here at Town Hall?
Yeah, I tell your attorney to do, handle it for you, he'll explain it to you, or she'll explain it to you.
Well, you have to go and make an application to the town.
Right. Take, this is what Jim is suggesting, something along those lines, okay?
Not exactly.
Not exactly, exactly, you guys have to work it out with your neighbor in terms of what works.
What you need is a surveyor to look, and you need to tell the surveyor that our pool needs to be 25 feet away from the property line.
Right.
What do I need from my neighbor in order to do that? And he could tell you and give you a meets and bounds description.
Okay.
And then say to him, figure out the square footage of that and give them my back corner.
And just remember, doing that is going to be a lot cheaper than taking out the pool.
I'm assuming, unless your neighbor has a real big piece of property, doesn't care about giving you any back, I mean, he doesn't have to. But that's generally what a lot line realignment does, you give some and you get some, okay?
Okay, can I just write that down?
Or you can just carve out your own, please. Lot line realignment.
Does, does your neighbor have a big piece of property, or is it standard?
We all have the same, I think it's like 1, 1 acre.
1.00 to 1.02.
So he can't reduce it and stay in the back.
Yeah, but he did something like he built a column on somebody else's when we first moved in.
Oh, so he made the same mistake.
He did the same thing that you just said, he gave it to the other neighbor in the back.
Yeah, but see, if, in order to stay in zoning, you can't give up your property and get too small, so he's got to give some back.
Can't go below the one acre.
Yeah.
Okay.
See what you can do, just keep Pam in the loop.
We have to file something before we do it?
You, for, for you to do that, you have to fi...
When you dropped off the zoning board application? No, my office, at the table.
Right to the left of this room here.
Comes here.
I have those applications.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Good luck, folks. Now you know why we do reviews, okay, for the rest of you. And now you know why the public hearings go as smoothly as they do, because we work out all these issues ahead of time. All right, item number 11, Appeal 3786, Tempest. Douglas Tempest, 129 Cranberry Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow 56 lineal feet of six-foot fence to be installed in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so you are in the Cover Ridge subdivision, so, can you, this is first we're seeing your app, your request, so if you don't mind walking us through why you're looking for 56 feet of fence. Um, I'm going to guess it's a neighbor issue.
Not an issue.
Not is, okay.
Their backyard, they're on the corner, and the back of their house faces the side of our house, and our garage is a side entrance.
Got it, okay.
When we come out of the garage, or walking down the walk, we see the back of their shed and where they dump leaves and things like that, so...
That's not very nice.
Yeah, that's not...
Well, but 18 years ago, we, we planted hemlocks.
Okay.
And we like our neighbors, so we're getting...
Yeah, they're fine.
Fine. Good to know.
We can see that, that's why we're joking.
But after 18 years, the hemlocks are very spindly, you see right through them, and the trees on their property block all the sun, so they grow into my driveway, and I keep chipping them back, but now they're so spindly, they're not a, a screen anymore.
Got it.
So replanting with some of the vegetation, to me, it's going to be the same issue. So we're looking for sort of a six-foot privacy fence, just to replace with the hemlocks, so that we have a cleaner, um...
How far back along the driveway are we talking about starting this six-foot fence? It's not going to be close to the road, you're, you're talking about starting it back pretty far back.
It's about 110 feet from the road, from where it would start, so...
Hundred, what, how far?
It's not going to be that far, it looks like, more like 80 feet or something though.
So the, the privacy fence would be right here, so when I come out of my garage, this is the back of their yard here, and then this is about 110...
Okay, 110 feet, okay.
It's 122 to the front of my house, so maybe 105.
You're saying 122? I'm looking at the other corner. I'm seeing that this is 101, am I, need my reading glasses?
Yeah, so the privacy fence would be right here.
Yeah, I see that.
On the side, um, from the house to this road is, what's it, oh, I'm sorry, it's 101, I'm sorry, 101.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was...
I don't know where you got 120 from, so I figure this is about 80 feet still.
Yeah, it's, it's a good 80 feet from the road, and I, I have some pictures, if I could, I'd be glad to show you.
When you come for the hearing, bring them, please.
Yes, and, so, right now, this is all just, you know, trees and things in here, and I have the hemlocks along there, and I just want, we're going to rip out the hemlocks and do some other things and...
I got it, yes. So your neighbor is actually a corner lot, and that's, so their house must face the other street, and that's why your, their backyard is your side yard.
That's correct.
Got it, okay. All right, any comments or questions from board members?
It seems reasonable, I'm ready.
Okay.
The only other comment I would like to make is, that, we had two different estimates, and it's either going to be 49 or 56, seven sections or eight sections, so that's a slight delta. And also, if you notice in the...
Well, you have to tell us how far back you want it, we need that measurement, so...
I'll go with a bigger number, and then you...
Let's go with this, let's go with the 56, if you do less than that, so be it.
That's fine.
Right.
The second issue is that when I laid out, because it was surveyed recently, I laid out, because if you notice, the driveway is not perfectly parallel to the property line.
Right.
In the back corner, it could get within a foot of the property line behind the tree from the neighbor.
In the back corner, though, is that behind your house?
Yes, but it still has to be two feet away.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, so...
You have to be two feet in from the property line.
Right, so...
You want to be two feet in for maintenance purposes, so...
Right, so...
We have to give a variance for the two feet.
But it...
Is there any reason why you were not going to make two feet?
Um, only, only for aesthetics, that we wanted to leave enough room from the edge of driveway to the fence to put gravel and put some plots with, pots with like plants and things along there, and if I make it any closer...
So, well, I mean, the idea is, is that you have two feet, so you can walk behind your fence and maintain it and that kind of stuff, so that's what the law requires.
Okay.
So, I mean, you got a good neighbor now, if they decide to sell, and you got a problem neighbor a year from now, how are you going to maintain your fence? If you have to go to the other side.
It's a no maintenance fence.
You would hope so, but I've never found anything to be no maintenance.
I never found one either, so...
I mean, there's things I don't maintain, that doesn't mean they're no maintenance.
So you can't get variance for the two feet.
Because when you're four feet, you're, that's an issue, no, no, not, not an issue.
A four-foot high fence.
But again, when you're looking at six foot, so you'll have to go for, that section, maybe you can go four feet.
This is looking from the backyard to the front, that stake is on the property line, the trees are here.
Okay.
They have a big tree right here, so what I'm talking about is, I would be maybe a foot from that stake, as compared to two feet from that stake.
Okay. Yeah, but in essence, it's where those U's are now, right?
Yes, exactly, it's exactly where they are now, except that they end before the fence would, I'm going to extend the fence about one section beyond where the...
Yeah, that, that part I'm not fine, but they already come over enough into your driveway
Yeah, they...
that, that should give you enough room to be able to move that fence in a little bit.
I think so, I think you're going to have two feet.
Yeah, I think you're going to have the two feet.
I'm just asking you to be careful and leave two feet between your property line and the fence.
Okay, that's what we have to do.
That's, it's important for maintenance purposes.
And again, joke aside, no maintenance, but if something was to grow on it, you know, some vines or something, and you couldn't get back there to take care of them, it could be a problem.
Right. Okay. Super, um, motion to advertise?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign, and we will see you next month. All right, item number 12, Appeal 3787, Waterkill Rod and Gum Club. Thomas Colgan, president of Waterkill Rod and Gum Club, 540 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use to replace a 12-foot square foot, four-foot by three-foot sign with a 48-square-foot, eight-foot by six-foot by six-foot sign to be located 12 feet off the pavement pursuant to section 194-123 and note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Michael Plaza, Doug Morley.
So we're familiar with the existing white sign?
Correct, correct.
That, you know, advertises different events and stuff like that that are going on.
Yeah, the existing white sign is, has been permitted, we have a copy, I'm sure you guys have it on file.
Yes.
Um, but that size, it's not legible from a distance, you know, the traffic over there. And one important thing is, obviously, the rail trail is there now, which, I mean, we use all the kids, we use all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, people do drive a little bit at a speed, and obviously read things, that's what signs are for. Uh, we hold a lot of public events there, not just member stuff, but also for the public, rent-a-hall, indoor-outdoor, all that stuff.
Right.
So the sign size proposed, I myself personally have been doing signs for like almost 20 years, but, um, we're doing this as members of the club. So, the sign size proposed and the font sizes, I have laid out, so we could have at a decent distance legibility without a distraction. Uh, the size of the signage itself, with the upright structures, which are the posts, um...
Are these the colors you're proposing that it be?
It's just printed out, it would be a brown, actually, what we're gonna be utilizing is, you know, actually, it's gonna be framed in hardwood, it's just this shade, it's pretty close, it's a brown, it's wood, it's not gonna be like a red mahogany or anything like that. I could give you the, I could give you the exact color if you want it.
It's not an electronic sign also.
No electronics, basically, all the graphics is printed on 3M material, applied to a half-inch, it's like aluminum, and it has a plastic substrate, which is recycled material, it's called Durabond, and if you see the little poles on the left and right coming out behind the sign bodies, those are aluminum, it's not gonna rust and drip down and show all the drippy nasty stuff.
I think my only concern is, is are you blocking sight distance? You have a lot of pickup trucks that I see coming out of there, so...
Correct, correct, right now, it's like, kinda like a Y, Central Hudson has a pole in the middle, I actually made a call to request, they stick the pole at one side, kind of in the middle, you know, there's been people not even members, some people, when they turn in, some people use it as a U-turn a lot, and they've hit the pole, you know, damaged their car and whatever else. But yeah, the sign setback is actually the same setback as the existing sign.
So, the outer edge of it is gonna be what's there now?
Correct, on the previous permit, which was approved 1990, I believe, or so, from the yellow line, it was 25 feet.
From the middle.
But when I, the billing department told me to measure from the road blacktop, so that's the specs on here, which shows 12 feet, and 12 to the white line is about three to four feet, and then the white line to the yellow line, which equals a total of 25 feet. So, we're not moving anything forward, it exists now, if you wanna drive by, take a peek or whatever.
Right, no, I've noticed you have a lot of community events there, and you know, the sign is always something, there's something going on here, so...
Yeah, it's become more of a family kinda thing.
Yeah.
And so, as you see from the picture here, I superimpose the artwork on exactly where it will be, and that frontage, you know, we've been addressing a lot of things there, everything's getting cleaned up, like we're redoing the whole place, so...
How far off the ground is the bottom sign?
Uh, let's see, 8 inches, 96 inches.
I'm just thinking, is your snow piles up?
Yeah, I always do a minimum of 24 inches.
Okay, that's still fine, then, okay.
And if, it's not electrical, but if it was, I would put a disconnect box, no less than 18 inches, but 24 inches was, we got, you know, sometimes 18, 20 inches. Snow won't affect this sign at all, as I said, it's made of aluminum, this can be made of hardwoods, is gonna be trimmed in hardwood, and the material that it's printed is 3M material, which has a laminate on it.
So, how do you, I have two questions.
Yes.
Are you gonna have some kind of lighting or something around?
There's a pole, there's a pole light at that Y intersection, at that double...
There's a light on the pole, like Central Hudson's pole, but we are not putting any lighting on this sign itself.
Okay.
And it's not, it's not going to be reflective as of today. Down the road, if we choose that, we'll come in for a permit and do electrical permit and stuff like that.
And the second thing is, you're gonna have events that you're gonna be changing?
Correct.
So, how are you gonna do that?
Correct, the bottom sign there, pretty much right now, it's a changeable copy, it just doesn't, it's gaudy, it just doesn't even look good.
It works, people read it.
It works, but it's too small, I mean, I gotta stop myself and like read it, but you know, so basically, the bottom sign there, I, see the three lines, clam bake, fish and chips, every Friday, so I'm gonna have, we're gonna have three changeable copied lines. It's not gonna be individual letters, I personally, that's like 1980 stuff, I like having the whole line, so whatever, if the chairman's like, hey, we're doing this, you know, we'll just make it up, so it's one piece, it'll look better, and then the old sign that's there has tracks in that dust and dirt, it's, and it doesn't look good. This'll be totally flat, if it rains, it like washes itself, does really only a little bit of maintenance, can't say no maintenance, we know that.
So, how does it, how does, how do you swap it, you know, for example?
Magnetize.
Yeah, basically, the bottom panel there, the top is aluminum, the bottom panel will be, will be steel, it's primed and painted just like a car, so basically, there won't be any issue because of magnet, and just like a truck car magnet, you know, goes on there.
Okay.
That's the best way to do it, 'cause I don't like using hardware, 'cause hardware looks gaudy, so...
Any other questions?
Less maintenance.
Exactly.
Motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pam will give you your instructions to your sign.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, item number 13, Appeal 3788 Dalton, Donald Dalton, 8 Stephen Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 28-foot rear line variance and a 269-square-foot size variance for a proposed 32-foot by 32-foot, 1,024-square-feet detached garage, which is more than 60% of the square footage of the footprint of the house, footprint of the house is 1,258 square feet, pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. So, Mr. Dalton, you are requesting a 32-foot by 32-foot garage?
Yes.
Can you explain why that size, that's pretty large?
Well, I have a, I have a shed sitting there right now, it's 10 by 10.
Okay.
Okay, and it's, it was full of Christmas stuff, but I, I went up and I bought a carport, a 10 by 17.
Okay.
And I put everything in it, the shed is going away.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a, I have a 10 by, it's a 10 by 10 for all my Christmas and Halloween stuff that I put out for the year, plus I have a, I have two tractors for my yard, and I have a, I just bought a new truck and a new car, and I got a plow on it, so the plow, with the plow and the truck together, it comes out to like 25 feet, okay, but I wanna put a car lift in it, so I could maintain my own vehicles, plus I have a, I have several different items that I take care of the lawn, like the sweeper, the thatcher, and it gets ruined every year, so I end up, every other year, I gotta buy one of these pieces of equipment, so I wanna put everything inside.
Okay, so it's, it's more than just a vehicle story, you've got lawn maintenance and other...
It's more than believing, it's Christmas, it's lawn tractors, it's trucks, I have two trucks, so, and two cars, I have a trailer.
Why is it, why are you having it so far back from your driveway? Why is it not moved forward a little bit, so it went next to your driveway?
It's only four, it's only four feet off my driveway.
Looks like more than four feet.
It looks like more than there, I measured it, it's between four and six feet.
Are you gonna extend your driveway to it, or...
I'm gonna have a, I want just a concrete, like a small concrete skirt coming out.
Okay.
This way, when I come out with the plow, it's safe. Yeah, that's only, that's only like four or six feet from the driveway.
Pam, can we sure, is this 28 feet or 29 feet?
Yeah, because I'm looking at the dimensions for the back, it says 21.5 feet, and then I used that, those measurements to look at the proposed garage front area to the blacktop.
I understand that, and I measured it, because what I did was, I put, after he put his stake in, because I had him put a proposed stake in where it is, where 21.5 is, I measured a square off of that, and then I measured to the driveway, it's only six, between four and six feet.
Okay, so it begs the question, can you move it up the four feet to the driveway?
I would like to keep it a little off, so it has a little, it would look better with a little concrete in there, you know, to make it look pretty.
You need a four-foot apron, or...
I'll move it, I can move it up two feet, I'd just like to have that concrete apron there, you know, for the front of the garage.
Understood, I understand that, but I'm not sure you need a four-foot apron, that's, that's the point, so if we can, again, the idea is to try to minimize the variance that you're asking for, and you're actually...
I understand what you're saying.
You're actually up to 29 feet of the 50 feet that's required.
Yes.
So, you're actually asking for more than half of the...
Well, I was trying to make it look right for the house, you know, I take pride in my place, you know, so it's, it is what it is, and I wanna keep it looking right.
Okay.
And I just thought it would look too gaudy coming onto the driveway.
Sometimes it looks more in keeping with the house, if it's closer to the driveway.
I don't know, just, to me, it doesn't look right that way.
Okay.
I was just looking for that little breakup away from it.
Okay, so you're agreeing you'll move it forward two feet, so we'll reduce the variance from 29 feet to 27 feet?
Okay, I was, okay.
Okay.
I was gonna say three and a half, make it even 25 feet and be cut.
Well, he's not sure if he's got...
Yeah, I understand.
Four feet or six feet, and if it's, if it's only four feet...
Call it six feet, it doesn't matter to me. If you wanna call it six, I'll go back and measure it, if it's not, then we'll just, you know, we'll do what I have to do.
Need to advertise if we're into it tonight, if you have time, that's not a problem. I don't have a, I'm looking for something that gives me an equivalent measurement, and I don't.
Yeah, because the thing is, whoever drew this up...
He didn't draw the garage right, I knew that, I knew that when I seen it, I says, gee, it doesn't, it doesn't compare, because when I put the square in, because what I did was, I drew the square, but because I used the lawn, I used the tractor to cut the grass and everything in that area, I put four golf balls in the ground, so I went back and I measured the golf ball on the left side, on the left side, it goes, it's between four and a half, between four and a half and six feet, I forgot what it was exactly.
Because, that doesn't make sense to me, because who wrote the 33 and the 39 for the shed and the tree?
I did.
So, if that's...
Oh, that's not the surveyors?
No, what happened was...
Well, my point is, if that's 33 feet, that distance is the same width as your proposed garage.
As your garage, right.
So, that garage is 32 by 32, and that means, it looks to me more like half of the 21, you got like 10 feet or something.
That's like 10 feet, exactly.
So, the question is, how are you keeping things square when you measure?
I didn't do any of this, what I did was, when I, when I came in for the variance for the garage, the woman down there, which was very nice, she says, well, these look like they're not, she says, you should go back and measure these to see if they're right, so I went back, and they weren't, so I came back to her, and I put it on, that's when I took all the maps that you, the prints you have, and I wrote them on here, because that's, I did it off the property lines.
I think we are confusing up here, because the 33, 39, you're talking about the treehouse and the shed, I think.
Yes.
You're talking about the proposed garage dimension.
Oh, no, no, he was just talking about the shed and the treehouse.
I'm not confusing things, I'm saying...
No, no, what I'm saying is, 'cause I'm confused, because when you...
Well, let me explain it.
Okay. Who drew this?
He's saying that the garage was drawn too small, I says, if it's 32 by 32, that is the same length as that length.
Right.
And so, it's not drawn too small.
His measurements aren't right.
It's not drawn too small, then it's more than four feet.
They're not right, I know they aren't, and I knew this was gonna come up, it's not right because of the way, he didn't do it, he didn't put them in, where does he say, I think it's one inch for every 50 feet, and it doesn't come out that way, if you look at the lower left, it says one inch equals 50 feet.
I don't have that survey.
And if that's the case, that...
You don't have the full thing, sorry.
The proposed garage would be 50 by 50.
Well, I don't have a, well, this is a photocopy.
This is not a full size, this is...
I know, but that's what I'm saying, the prints, the print, is it, how do I say?
The photocopy is not a full print, correct?
This is not the full size of the survey.
This is what he gave me, it's the same thing.
Usually, it's done on a slightly larger piece of paper, like 11 by...
I copied yours at the time, but he gave me... Use that paper, it's like 11 by 17.
Yeah, 11 by 17, but this...
See, well...
Okay, I don't know.
Have to ask Spencer.
There's a slight difference.
And in event, I would like to see...
I went over and had copies made, so I don't, you know...
I mean, it might...
The problem is, is I don't know how you're, 'cause you're measuring something without actually having something there, so if you're, when you lay it out, if you're laying out your distances so it's parallel to your house, yeah, that corner is gonna be a lot closer to your driveway than what that survey shows.
It is.
That's my, again, that's my point, so as the way it's laid out right now, you got more than four feet between your blacktop drive and your proposed garage, if you are gonna line it up so that these are parallel, then you're gonna have less space in keeping that corner as far away.
Well, you got it a little off square, it should've been...
Do you want it square, is that what you're trying to say?
I could do that, it still wouldn't interfere with anything, because I have 33 feet on one side, but I still have the, it's gonna be pivoted on that point, you know, just to bring it to...
I'm not asking, I'm not sure we're communicating.
I don't understand what you're saying, we're not communicating.
I'm just saying that the way, are you gonna put your proposed garage in the same position as shown on the survey?
Yes.
So, if that's true, then you got more than four feet between your blacktop drive and your proposed garage.
On the left side, it's between four and six feet, I didn't, I put a ruler on it, but I didn't, I didn't, you know, I just threw it out and looked at it, I said, okay.
I think it's a lot more than four feet.
Yeah, that's why, that's what I'm saying, sir, you can't measure something that way and come up with an accurate measurement, it's impossible to do.
Do you need a ruler?
So, I would say that, you know, we could go with a 25-foot variance in the back, we don't have to make a big deal about it, not that important.
What I would suggest is, if you can just talk to the land surveyor and see if he can put these measurements for you, because he just did the survey just earlier this year, I mean, actually, last month.
Yeah, he just did it last month.
Last month, so he has all the notes, and it's just so much easier for everybody, because right now, it doesn't make, it doesn't look like...
Your surveyor should be able to tell you, you should just be able to call him, he should be able to tell you what's the distance between the front of the garage and your driveway, all right? He just did these measurements a month ago, so he should be able to fill, he should've filled these measurements in for you, so he should be able to tell you what's that distance between your garage, your proposed garage and driveway.
You wanna know, you don't wanna know the distance between the blacktop and the corner of the garage?
Yes.
Is this the left side or the right side you want?
The left, if you're facing it.
Well, I could, I could do that myself, I'll go home and put a ruler on it, but that's...
You can't do it accurately that way, that's my point.
'Cause you're telling us it's somewhere between four feet and six feet, and we're suggesting it's probably 10 feet, if not more.
I mean, it's almost impossible for you...
So, that's what we're concerned about.
It's almost impossible for you by hand, are you sane? Is that 32 by 32?
I, he...
Let me ask my question before you can answer it, are those four corners of your 32 by 32 garage staked by the surveyor?
The one stake in the corner is, but that one, the 21.5 is.
So, you, there's no way that you by just using a tape measure can do an accurate 32 by 32 and figure out how far you are?
Measure this garage, and he says it's 32 feet.
By doing a square and crisscrossing, you can't come up with a square?
No, not, well, you can come pretty darn close, but you're not gonna get it correct.
If the garage is 32 feet, what's the distance then between the left corner of the garage and the driveway?
That's...
Because it's gonna be some percentage of 32.
This, this is showing more than eight feet between, more than eight feet.
Okay.
It's like nine feet again, that's not being so accurate.
So, our point is, can you move the, if you, if we're talking about having a two-foot apron, and it's, when we think it's eight feet, can you can move it forward six feet, and instead of needing a 29-foot variance, you only need a 23-foot variance? Which is less than half of the distance then, you've got more than half of the distance required.
I agree with the movement, I like his better though, 25.
Yeah, make it, yeah, the three and a half, make it even 25.
He was at 25, so 10 minutes ago, though.
But I, 'cause I knew he could do it.
Yeah.
I'll go to 25.
You'll go to 25?
He's so 25.
Yes?
I think so.
I meet us halfway. All right, I do have some questions to ask you, you have two sheds and a deck that do not have certificates of occupancy, or...
I have one shed and a treehouse, the treehouse...
The treehouse, does the treehouse have stairs that are on the ground, or is it up, is that up in a tree?
No, it has stairs.
It has stairs, how big are the stairs, like full stairs, or is it just a ladder?
No, it's stairs.
It's stairs, okay, stairs then makes the treehouse probably a structure, but, so you're saying you only have one shed otherwise?
I had two sheds, but I'm getting, I'm getting rid of the one shed that's where the proposed garage is.
All right, so one shed's to be removed.
Yeah.
Because you had two sheds, I think, believe that's, what's the shed of, what's the size of the existing shed that's there, it looks pretty small.
Eight by 10.
Yeah, okay, so, because Pam, it's just one shed, it should not require the permit, right, less than 12 foot by 12 foot, if you had two sheds, the second one would have required the permit, okay?
Probably will get rid of it.
All right, but now you have a deck that does not have a CO, do you know when the deck was put on?
Well, the deck on the house.
It's not attached to the house, though.
Well, it doesn't matter, do you have a-
I built an octagon deck, and the guy told me, when I went to the permit, to get a permit, he says, you don't need it, because it's not attached to the house.
Is it a patio, or is it a deck?
It's a treehouse.
No, no, we're not talking about the treehouse, the deck.
By the pool.
By the-
230 square feet.
My, my deck?
Your deck by the pool, is that like a gazebo or something back there, it's got a-
No, it's an octagon deck, that's it.
How, and how far off the ground is it?
Wait.
Maybe a foot.
The 230 square foot deck is attached to the house.
Oh, it's attached to the house, okay.
The big one, oh, it's-
Well, that one was there.
You didn't replace it or anything?
No.
How long have you owned the house?
Since 1990, we had new flooring put in it.
You had new what?
They took the decking up and put new decking on it?
New flooring, yeah, we changed it to the plastic decking, so you didn't have to-
I don't think so, right, you're not changing footings or anything like that, so.
And if this was built with the house, it should be-
Do you know when the house was built?
No, I think in the early 80s.
All right, so the deck-
This is 92.
92, but he's owned it since 1990.
No, I'm sorry, the deck is 92, the house was built in 86.
Your house was built in 1986.
Oh, wait a minute. All right, now, the 230 square foot deck was built in 86, and so was the house.
Okay, why wouldn't it have gotten a CO as, with the, with the house? Okay, we'll try to resolve this issue for you, okay, so you've pretty much addressed everything, now, the treehouse, how wide are your steps, like, how much, how much wood is on the ground?
On which, on which one now?
The treehouse.
The treehouse, it's about two foot wide, the steps.
I don't think that that's a structure, a structure is, requires something on the ground, usually a treehouse is in a tree, and you're climbing up a ladder to get there, so, I think, okay, let's, we'll talk to Scott again, but I have a feeling we're going to continue this as a treehouse, because it's just a stair to get there, okay, and it probably, does the stair have a footing or anything, or is it just really anchored to the tree?
No, it's on the ground, I put, I put pavers underneath it.
Just, but it's not anchored into a concrete pad or anything.
No.
But it's anchored, is it, but the stairs are anchored to the tree, or to the house?
No, it's anchored to the deck up on top.
To the treehouse.
To the treehouse.
Which is in the tree, all right, we'll work that out with the building department. All right, so, motion to advertise for a 25 foot-
Rear line.
Rear line variance for a garage, because of all his lawn equipment and Christmas decorations, that is, exceeds the 60%.
Second.
Motion?
I mean, make a motion, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pam, thank you for your ruler, all right, so, Mr. Dalton, we will see you next month, Pam will give you information on your sign.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Things we do for 25, I'm going to get confused, it's 25.
Pam, you have that down, it's 25 feet? Thank you, just so we don't get confused when we hear this one again, okay, item number 14, Appeal 3789 Truitt, Christopher Truitt, 6 Loganberry Court, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 20 foot rear, front line variance for a proposed 36, 32 foot by 36 feet, 1152 square foot detached garage, which is less than 60% of the square footage of the footprint of the house, footprint of the house is 2,000 square feet, pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance, good evening.
Good evening, I'm back again.
Yeah, we did see you once before.
Yes, we did, yeah, I should have had my man cave by now, but geology, the topography of my, my lot has dictated otherwise.
Got it, okay, all right, so, go through it, just tell us, you're back again?
I'm back again.
What's, what's the issue here?
I originally was granted a 10 line, 10, 10 foot side variance on the right-hand side of my property, however, the, the rock, I have, my backyard is essentially a rock ledge, so, in discussing it with the, the excavator, I says, it's much too rocky, so it's, it's, it's just not-
So, you just can't get the footings in there, or?
Just can't get the footings in, it's, but I said, well, I can't build it on the other side either, because I have a flood problem, so, he looked at that, and he said, with the re-grading of the property, that it was more of a simple fix than I had thought it would be.
Okay.
And he also took an auger and drilled it down-
Right.
To where it would be.
Did a test pit?
Yeah, to do a test, a test depth, and where the rock no longer becomes an issue, is approximately 20 feet from where the sideline would be.
Okay, so, but my question would be, if you're going to be re-grading that side, and it had a drainage issue, where is that water now going to go?
On the far end.
Important thing is, are you going to impact a neighbor?
Or are you not going to throw it on the road?
No.
No, okay, so the water is still going to collect somewhere on your property?
Yes, forward.
Okay.
Not, not on the side yard, it's going to go forward.
Okay, and there's already a depressed area there, or a swell, or something, something that catches it there?
That catches it.
Okay, because it's, it's very important that, water that's on your site, sites, on your property stays on your property.
Stays on your site, correct.
Okay, all right, so essentially, because we had already approved the garage, but because of the topography, you just couldn't put it where you originally expected.
Correct.
And so, by putting it closer to the two hillsides, you would, you reduce its overall visibility, okay.
That's the plus side to it, if I built it as, you know, within the setback, it'd be so far forward, and all the way over, that it has much more of a presence.
Okay.
But by doing this, it actually tucks it in, and I also planted, already planted last fall, 21 evergreens in that area, just serve as a natural fence, whether or not I do build, and that would further reduce the sightline visibility.
Okay, the, where's your septic?
Directly in the front of the house.
Okay, so it's, that's not impacted, but, you know.
Yeah, show septic tank on there.
Yes.
All right, there's a shed to be relocated, where's that shed going to be relocated?
On the, where the other, the original garage was going to be proposed, in that area, behind the original house.
Going all the way behind the house?
Yes.
Takes care of that problem.
All right, this is a corner lot.
Yeah, but when you say behind, you mean physically behind the house, or just the other side of the garage, so physically behind the house, that should take care of it.
But again, it'll be still in the front yard, because you've got the whole-
No, you're not, if he's physically behind the house, he won't be in the front yard.
Oh, it'll be behind the-
Behind the house.
Right, because-
Okay, then, then that's fine.
So, we're putting a garage in the front line of a house?
Now, the, as it shows on the survey-
Already there?
Isn't it coming out?
The garage is-
I'm sorry?
This is his proposed detached garage.
Are you referring to the shed or the garage, Pam?
The shed's already there.
The shed's already there.
But the garage is not there, where, where have you put those, where have you put that screening, the evergreens?
If you're looking at the plot on the left-hand side?
So, along the other street?
On Hollyberry, on Hollyberry Drive, yes.
All right, so you've really put up some significant screen in there, so that-
Significant, yeah, 21 and counting.
And how tall are they?
Yeah, right now, two feet.
Oh, it'll take a little while before they, they block that garage.
I planted them all last fall, they all took, so.
Okay.
No, garage can be in the side, Pam.
So, we have to pick a front line.
But it is in a, it's in a-
He's got two front yards.
Yes, I have two front yards.
Right, because he has, he's a corner lot, so we just pick one?
No, it can be, no, both roads have to be back 50 feet.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why it's a front line variance.
But-
Right.
But, for purposes of whether the house, the garage is in front of the house, we just pick one?
No, we have to work with both.
That's why I'm confused by what she's saying, so technically, we're-
But it's not in front of the front line of the house, so it's technically in the-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's-
You can't build a front line of the house, so we're behind the front line of the house.
We're behind the front line.
We're in the front yard, but we're not in the front line of the house, the way the statute's written.
Yes, okay, so we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Got it.
Also, if I may, on the, on the plot plan, where the surveyor has it as proposed, it's actually, would be further back from where he, he just put it there.
We see a note here, yeah.
But I'm, my goal is to put it as far back as possible.
That, that makes it nicer, yeah.
Okay, motion advertise?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we'll see you next month.
I had a question, may I use the, reuse the bumblebee sign that I had from the last time?
You should be able to, right?
My kids call it the bumblebee sign, it's-
It's fine.
Is that fine, okay.
Just as long as it's visible, that it's this year's date, and-
Correct.
Yeah, make sure you get the date on, yeah.
Correct.
And you have two of them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you're good.
Yes, you can reuse your signs.
Just put it up, I mean, 20, oh, and I have to tell you what to put on it.
All right, item number 15, Appeal 3790 Stevens, Joanne Stevens, 26 Meads Lane, Stormville, is requesting a, an 8 foot sideline variance for an existing 10 foot by 16 foot shed, pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, good evening.
Good evening.
The shed was put in 11 years ago, according to your application, ah, this is the X, never mind, okay.
You read that, huh?
I did read it, I just had to refresh my memory, I was like, oh, one of those, okay, all right, so, so a shed was put in, it's got, does it have a concrete base, or what's the base, why, why can't the shed be moved, is the question?
Well, it's, one of the problems is that the driveway was put in afterwards, and it was brought up to the top, so, so things could roll right into the shed, so if you moved the shed, you've got this-
So, it functions as where it is, and?
Yeah, also, there's a patio behind the house.
Okay.
If the shed were to move over, first of all, I'd have to take out a lilac bush, but second of all, I, there's not enough room, because it would be on top of the patio, so, it would have to be like in the middle of the yard, to be 30 feet in.
Well, don't get me started on that issue.
You know, the truth is that, I'm, my father died, and I need to sell the house immediately, and I didn't know that this was all, you know, I'm not taken care of, and so, I'm just trying to resolve the situation as quickly as I can.
Okay, again, it's 10 foot by 16 feet, so that is pretty significant in terms of being able to move it, 11 years old, it's probably still in good condition, so, doesn't make sense to take it down?
No, I can't take it down.
Okay, do your neighbors have any objection, like I said, it's been there for 11 years?
Not a word, never heard a word.
But to the extent that you can get a letter from your neighbor, especially the most impacted neighbor, the neighbor on that side?
If I ask him-
That would help.
I'm sure that they would.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't, honestly, because it's just never come up, but I certainly can.
Do I have a motion advertise, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll see you next month, Pam will give you your sign.
And I should have a letter from him with me when I come next month?
That would, that would be helpful, then they, then they don't have to come, and then-
All right, I'm just curious, what if they don't want to put it in writing, what do they do, they come to the next meeting and complain?
As long as they don't come and object to the, to it.
They don't, okay, okay.
All right, silence means consent, right?
Very much.
Okay, item number 16, Appeal 3791 Troy, Paul Troy, 23, James Dourland Drive, Wapinders Falls, is requesting a variance to allow an existing 10 foot by 14 foot shed to remain in front of the rear line of the house, pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, good evening.
Good evening.
Sounds almost similar to what we just heard, huh, so you have a 10 foot by 14 foot shed, does it have a concrete floor, what's the base of it, no?
No.
And so, why can't it be moved?
The elevation of the house, Mr. Bryant actually came and saw it, he was supposed to write a letter, the elevation behind the house, which is about 12 feet from the back of the deck, if you see the deck there?
Yep.
That, that elevation actually kind of swings around, and comes down around the back of the shed, and along the side of the shed, so actually, the shed was kind of tucked into the hillside, pretty much.
Okay, and Mr. Bryant did, I did see him on Friday, and he did say, explain to me that you had done some pretty significant drainage work-
Right, right.
-there, so, addressing an issue for the town, so, he was definitely appreciative of the work that you had done-
Thank you.
-to correct a drainage issue, so, I think he believed that this was the best location for the house.
The only way that shed could be moved would be forward, forward of the house, which I didn't want.
Which is not where we want it, and you have a septic field in the front area.
Exactly.
Motion to advertise.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.